You want to start begging the law? That's an immediate order?
Yes, gosh!
You want to try it all? All in favor?
I'm trying to keep my form.
Please stand for the flag symbol.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegotten, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now probably we have more for the roll call, please.
And Mark Shanta, here.
Here.
And Craig, here.
Here.
And Sperlock, please.
Okay, so we have an agenda. I'd like to propose unless there's an objection that we do away with committee reports for today and just move on forward. Our bill of change.
Is it five?
Yeah, I'll second. Right through to here.
Sure.
And anything you may want to say, you can say in your own report, so. Okay, with that in mind, would that change the agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you, I'll bring it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Next, we have a presentation from Siskiyou Economic Development Council. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that on here. We have approval of the amendments. I guess there are changes on that, is that correct?
Correct, yes, there was one change in the very last paragraph. It was about the grant application for the FAA and we added on grant applications for supplemental discretionary funds with the addition of in the amount of 100% of cost, having that in to show that there was no match for that grant.
And we matched that with the video, so we made sure it was worded as you worded it, so.
Thank you. I'm relieved that we approved it.
Well, there's one other correction. If you look at the top, it has Sperlock as being president and Craig not, then you have Sperlock being absent.
On the top of the minutes?
Yeah. Roll call.
Well, with that in mind, I'll make the motion as amended.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So your question was to approve the minutes as amended?
As amended.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Okay, with that in mind, Economic Development Council, Stephanie.
Move my mic closer here, I hope that's okay. Good evening, my name is Bethany Muller, I'm with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. I'm joined here by my colleague Heather Dodd, and she works on our Discover Siskiyou campaign. I'm just going to provide some highlights of some of the work that we've been doing in 2017, and then I'll turn it over to Heather to share some updates on the Discover Siskiyou campaign. And we also have a short video, like very, very short videos, so I hope that is okay. And then we're happy to answer any questions if there's time, if you guys have time. So first of all, I provided some printed materials which are available on our website, siskiucounty.org, for anyone that would like them. We have a copy of our annual report, and then we also have some other educational materials that we have put forth. That was in part of a result of some grant funded projects that we worked on, but then also just to be a resource for our elected officials as well. As many of you know, we're the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. We've been around for about 30 years. We are a nonprofit, I have a 1C, 3 and 4. And we are, we work primarily with our partner jurisdictions, of which the city of Dunsmere is one. So we work really on a day-to-day basis with city managers, and we help identify projects that are of importance and of significance. And we are governed by a board of directors that are representative of businessmen and women from across the county, one of whom is in our audience tonight, Kit Marshall. So I'll just go right into some of the other topics that we have. So last year, no, two years ago, in 2016, we acquired the Small Business Development Center. And I guess I should preface that by saying, we are the first stop in Siskiyou County for business attraction and retention. So businesses that are looking to locate here, we work with the cities to help field those inquiries and provide resources and information. That being said, we acquired the Small Business Development Center in 2016. It's a federally recognized program that is wonderful because it provides us with a lot of resources and access to resources. So we, through the SBDC, have access to counselors from all over the Northern California region for small business owners. So if you need some more technical assistance, some more one-on-one counseling, we have the ability to connect small businesses. We also have the ability to connect them with financial, capital infusion, things of that sort. So it's a great program for that purpose. We have been actively working with about five businesses in the city of Dunsmere over the past year. And in a lot of arenas, we've been working with businesses from lodging, like lodging properties, retail, food and manufacturing. So we've been busy in terms of working with the city on businesses. If you know, of course, always, if you know of any businesses that come to you or need help, always feel free to refer them to us, myself, Sean Smith, he's here with me tonight too, over there. And we're always happy to take phone calls and pick up the phone, email us anytime. I'll just keep going in light of time, and I'll just quickly highlight a couple more things. We have been doing, as we know, we do a lot of work in brownfields. This past year, we were excited to partner with the cities of Wairika, Weed and the county to receive a $600,000 EPA grant to do some assessments of brownfield sites in Siskiyou County, the cities of Wairika and Weed. We also continue to work on electric vehicles and building some infrastructure for electric vehicles. We know that there is a plethora of electric vehicle owners and drivers that come through Siskiyou County, so we have been the lead on building some of that infrastructure. We have one here in Dunsmere, as you guys know. We're also going to be doing some exciting things related to tourism and electric vehicles, building some itineraries for people who drive electric vehicles for places to visit in Siskiyou and that are based on places where they can charge their cars along the way. So very exciting. And then finally, before I turn it over to Heather, I just wanted to mention about workforce, that we have been actively working in the arena of workforce. We, in speaking with businesses, know that in Siskiyou County, it is a very, it's a challenge for almost every business owner. And so we have identified a program called the Employment Training Panel. It is a program that is run by the state of California. We are applying to be a, they call it a multiple employer contract. So in other words, we would be a point of resource for local businesses that are looking to do on-the-job training. And then they could be reimbursed for a certain amount of those expenses related to any work-related trainings that they do. So it's a great program. We don't have, we don't have it currently in Siskiyou County, so we're exploring the option of bringing that into our territory. With that, I'll turn it over to Heather to just provide some updates, and then we'll show you some video.
Who have questions?
Sure. All right, I'll keep it pretty brief. I just wanted to provide you guys with a pretty high-level overview of the T-Bid and then show you guys some of the cool stuff we've been doing to promote Siskiyou as a tourist destination. So just a little overview, we are a self-assessment district. So all of the lodging properties in the county voted to form this district, and we're funded by a 2% fee per room at the hotels, and we're also funded by the ski park that contributes 2% of lift ticket sales, so that money goes into a fund. The monies can only be spent on marketing and advertising Siskiyou as a tourist spot. So it's a pretty cool program. We're run by a management committee. We have six members on it right now, including Louis Dewey from Dunsmere, yeah. We've also got, we're pretty well represented around the county. We have Marcy from the Best Western in Mount Shasta. We have someone from McLeod, Wairika, we kind of tried to...
Rita, off the happy day.
Rita, actually, she, her term just ended, so she's not on there anymore. But yeah, it's a really good group. We're in year four right now, just started year four in July. So we've got some pretty cool stuff going on. The first couple years were really, for us, all about building a strong foundation. We worked with a creative agency called Augustine out of Sacramento to really help with our brand development, logo design, really just building a strong foundation, knowing that we want this program to last a long time. And you know, we really wanted to do quality work there at the beginning, so that we had a really good foundation to move forward on. So year three is when we launched our first ad campaign, kind of got started in the marketplace. And now, beginning year four, we're starting to see the results of that. You know, increased web traffic, increased social media engagement and followers. You know, cities are telling us, you know, we're seeing our hotels are fuller, we're seeing we're tourists. It's kind of cool to see that starting to happen now. We are working on building our local capacity as a staff. So we worked with our creative agency, like I said, to build that foundation, but now we're figuring out, okay, what can we take in-house and do locally so that we can spend that money in our community instead of sending it out to Sacramento? And so that's why I was brought on board, kind of to do stakeholder outreach, graphic design type stuff. So that clues me into what we're doing now. One big thing is we're working with our local chambers. So we met recently with Dunsmere Chamber, Mount Shasta, Wairika. We, to figure out how we can come alongside of our local chambers and really highlight the activities that they're doing in our marketing campaigns. You know, as much as we'd like to think that advertising our hotels with great people here, it's really, you know, the cool stuff we have going on in the county that's going to benefit our local lodging properties. So one of the cool things that we actually just have printed are these brochures. I'll pass them around, you can take as many as you want. We have six different designs, kind of showcasing things we've got going on around the county. We've got family-friendly historic hotspots, places to get craft beverages, like breweries, distilleries, that kind of thing. The goal being to get people to either extend their stay if they see them in their hotel or plan a return trip. So we've got those in the lobbies of our hotels as well as our local chambers. And another cool thing we've been doing is working with a company called Pusher, you may have heard of them, to make videos of, we're calling them Siskiyou snapshots, so kind of showcasing areas around the county as well as local events. We've been sharing them on social media, they've gotten really a great response. We recently had Visit California share one of our Pusher videos, and they're the state even, they're huge, they have like several hundred thousand followers. They're crazy big.
I heard you're making a star of one of the people in there.
You may recognize our friend in the flag shirt over here, the stars in many of our videos. So yeah, we just wanted to show you, we have a video queued up here showcasing Real Road days that we thought, we can show you guys, so you can see an example of our work. What do you want?
Yeah, I'm all too good. Are you getting any royalties?
I have seen that.
We only use him because he works for free.
There's been a lot of interesting activity too. Hasn't been staying style like we're going out there. So you're doing pretty great, aren't you?
There you go.
Sorry, not everybody could do that, but you can.
Oh, yeah, the only other thing I was going to say about those is that we're sharing them, but we're also providing them like to chambers, community groups. You know, we have some versions of these, some of them have words on them, some of them we're providing them with the raw footage that they can use in our own marketing campaigns. We really just want to equip our local chambers with tools that they can use to, you know, help them with their jobs too. So really trying to support the chambers.
If you could give us access to the video to show tonight and make sure that they show up online along with the meetings, so anyone who's watching the meeting can turn around and see it quality instead of off the side there.
That'd be great, we can make that happen.
Any questions from the council members? Start off with Bryce.
Well, one thing I was going to say about the SBDC, is that, you know, I just haven't known that they do really great work, but you don't really hear about it because the work that they do is confidential with the businesses. So if they said they work with some businesses in Dunsmere, well, you know, we don't exactly know who those businesses are because their, you know, training and work that they do is confidential. But it's cool to hear that there's businesses in Dunsmere that are beneficial.
Mr. Sperlock, welcome.
Thank you. Apologies. No, I mean, the presentation was great to see. Well, I guess I gotta feel that these are ads that I see on social media all the time and such. It's getting out, it's getting around, and at least I have a credit chance.
Ladies first.
What's that?
Did you bring the yellow bit, my shirt?
Uh, no.
Oh, we didn't.
You guys did a fantastic job, especially, I love this one.
Thank you.
The water, the swimming spots. I hope there's lots of them down in the chamber.
Yeah, I was actually just asking, we dropped some off last week and he said they're already gone, so we need to restock, which is really cool to hear.
Nice look, it's really professional. Thank you.
David? Well, David's up and moving around.
Oh, I would like to give you a card.
Thank you.
Give you my card. Sean, that's your card, so I suppose I grab a card. I just want to thank you for coming. Good job. Um, there's a, give you my card, so you have my number. It's a holding ticket, come to Dunsmere anytime you want. And I'll teach you how to fish. You're very popular for our fishing, and you're not a word fish anywhere here. You're not promoting fishing. Dunsmere is a fishing mecca. People come from Amsterdam, Norway, Finland, just to fish this little river we got here. But I feel if you're going to help us, help us promote that.
Okay.
That would be my only great job, but there's no fishing here.
You will.
Just to let you know, there is a Dunsmere specific fishing activity video on its way.
On its way, production?
Production's already done, I believe. We filmed it Ted Faye and on the Versac and, pretty cool. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So yes, Mark, did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Mr. Burley, Sean?
I would just like to add that I've been working with them on and off throughout the year. In particular, one of the things that I've worked with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council was when we were looking to get a new leaseholder for our bombing facility. So it's apropos that today is the day that you're doing your presentation because I went to your team to help us promote and recruit to get somebody into our bombing facility and, that's what we have on the agenda today. I've also been talking with Sean and Bethany on different things. And one of the other things I talked with Sean about is the potential for the Mossbry Falls Trail to come in this year. And we're talking about parking, so that's one of the things I was saying to see what they may be able to look into for parking as well. And Sean said he would be looking into that. So there's been posting stuff on their websites, things like that, so it's been a good resource.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you that I've noticed, and I'm sure Bryce had a lot to do with the photographs, but the Facebook page for Discover Siskiyou is outstanding.
Thank you.
It is so unique to where everyone else is at there. Then we spotted a video, and how the hell did you get my son alive through that video?
Hey, who's your son alive?
Ryan, the parent of him.
Oh, oh, cool. I didn't know that.
Small world.
Yeah.
From my standpoint, a couple of things stand out. I would very much like to see a better emphasis this year, more, a second emphasis or whatever, on getting more electric vehicle chargers, particularly downtown. I know that we talked about it, I know the chambers been talking about it, and I'd just like to see if we could put another push on that and see how we can get a second one. Because right now, while we have somebody in North Dunsmere, which is great, but we need something more in central. The other thing is, I know we're in the process, economic development wise, of trying to open up an industrial park east of the airport, so I'm hoping and looking forward to working with you, all the marks working with you, to help make that and promote that once we're further along. And then finally, I'd like to say that one of the things I'm encouraged by is the idea that having, being not only on the Colliers Turf Center board, but also working with Siskiyou Revitalization Network, I'm starting to realize that you all are opening yourself up to the idea that all of these different players have a wall and they're starting to talk. I know that the county supervisors, board supervisors, has been very clear that they would like us to all come together and come up with a really comprehensive, top-down look at how all the different communities do tourism in the county. I think that would be beneficial. So sometime in the year, year forward, I'd like to kind of explore that further because I think there's a lot of ways of improving what we do in tourism, get the message out more cohesively and working together with all the different players. But thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, and I just want to, I hope it's not too disruptive, but if you don't mind, we'll just quickly pack up and...
Sure, go ahead.
You mean you're going to take a beautiful video with you? Yeah, yeah. This TV's been almost in every community in Siskiyou County, so thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you guys.
Can we take a five minutes and help them step out?
Sure, I'll take a five-minute break, and then I'll make it three if we can, try and get back soon. Follow me back to order? Okay, next we have public comments. Audience voting for public comment? Yes, Mr. R.
Well, thank you, Mr. R, Peter Rice, 5859 Sacramento Avenue. Just sort of in continuity with the presentation we all heard, it does occur to me that the visioning and planning effort that the city of Dunsmere started earlier this year, I'm not sure where it went. That is, I think it's extremely important for a community in Siskiyou County to survive if they have a vision and a plan. And Dunsmere as a city tried it in 2014, it really didn't go anywhere. Started in 2018, and it's been quiet since February. But in this week's paper, the city of Mount Shasta has formally begun a visioning process using both paper and the internet to try to engage citizens and businesses in the survival of the city of Mount Shasta. What do we want our businesses to look like as residences? What do we want our community to look like? And I think the city of Dunsmere needs to do the same. Most importantly, because it relates directly to the budget. How are you going to allocate your general and special fund resources without a vision and a plan? From infrastructure to economic development to all of this, you need to have a whole package. So I raise this with the sense that one of the candidates for the city council in November is Jordana Lucici. She is a city planner for the city of Mount Shasta. I haven't talked to her yet, but wouldn't it be good if our city tries to reengage in the visioning and planning process so we can be a full partner in the economic development of our community? And the longer you wait to do the visioning and planning, the steeper the road to recovery. So I'm hoping that the city renews its effort, doesn't wait until January, but starts now to be a full partner in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lormin here. Hi, my name's Leslie Wilde. I live here in Dunsmere on Eleanor Street. I wrote down my comments because sometimes I get up here and I forget, and I want to keep them timely. So it's my favorite time of the year, selection season. And it reminded me of when I ran for city council in 2010. The city manager at the time was Alan Harvey, and he treated council candidates the same as he did council members, and then he tried to keep them informed about city business so that if they were elected, prevailed, that they were not blindsided by issues. So he would provide me a copy of the council agenda and the packet. He would have it delivered to my office by Tony Kanji. And helped us keep involved. You know, they do that at the federal level too. After the candidates are nominated by their respective parties, they begin to get informed by the government so that if they're elected in the following November, they know what's going on and they're not blindsided. So I decided I'm going to start doing that too. Whenever I send Mark Brannigan an email, city manager, sorry, an email or a public records request, I'm also going to send a copy to the council candidates so they can see in real time his response or any lack of response. And I'm going to forward them some of our previous email communications just so they can see where we're at with city, some city business. Because you see, the city manager sits at the pleasure of the council. Only the council can fire the city manager or increase or decrease his salary or benefits. He's the subordinate to the council. Dunsmere Municipal Code explicitly states that council members may not direct or instruct the city manager to do anything except from the dais as a body. But they do have implied leverage. They have implied leverage because they can fire him for cause or no cause, and they also determine the ultimate compensation. The Dunsmere Municipal Code also states that council members may not direct, instruct or terminate city staff members. Only the city manager, this right is preserved solely for the city manager. Only the city manager can assign duties or discipline staff members. With all this in mind, I dropped by the city clerk's office last week in Wairika because I wanted to see the nomination papers of the council candidates. Because two of them, I've never even met, I don't know who they are, so I'm always curious who signed everybody's nomination papers. Before I drove up to Wairika, I made a prediction of likely who the incumbent would probably ask to sign her nomination papers. And I told a friend, I made a prediction of who would sign this nomination papers. And they said, "That would be outrageous," when I told them my prediction. "That would be unethical, that would never happen." And I said, "Okay, I'll take the mystery out of it." I predicted that Madisanta, the incumbent running for city council reelection, would ask the city manager, her subordinate, Mark Brannigan, to nominate her, even though it's a clear conflict, because she is in essence his boss and has the power to fire him or extend the terms of his contract. If she did this, she would be placing him in a terrible position. The person I said this to predicted that if this terrible thing did occur, that Mark Brannigan would explain to Madisanta, "I hope you're reelected, but it would be unethical for me to sign your nomination papers, and it would be unethical for my staff members if I sign your nomination papers and then you were to ask my staff, because they are subordinate to me." Because Mark Brannigan is the only one, sorry, the city manager is the only person that can fire city employees or assign them duties or set their compensation packets. And that he would not allow that to happen. And I laughed at this person's outrage, and I said, "Because this is Dunsmere after all." And I predicted that Madisanta's reelection campaign would be run entirely out of city hall. So without further ado, I just want to announce the name of the signers, and then I'll be done. Number one, the first name on the list, Mark Brannigan, city manager, top of the list. Second person on the list, Blake Michael... Blake Michaelson, Dunsmere City Finance Director, Mark Brannigan's subordinate. Number three on the list, Julie Iskra, Dunsmere Deputy City Clerk, Mark Brannigan's subordinate. Number four, name on the list, Tanya Belzer, Dunsmere City Utility Billing Clerk, Mark Brannigan's subordinate. Number five, not to be forgotten, and certainly not least, Mario Rabino, Dunsmere City Treasurer. I think this happened because, this is my personal opinion, Mark Brannigan is unethical, and I think people should know it.
Did it cover?
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna try and keep it light. Before I give my name and stuff, I want to say that Mark is incredibly ethical, and I have total faith in him. I think it was the best thing the city ever did. Mario Rabino, by 12 Dunsmere Avenue. I'm also the treasurer of the city of Dunsmere. I'm in front of council because I think I'd like to see you guys revisit, as soon as possible, the, for consideration, the 10% sales tax on marijuana. So let me start at the beginning. This is not Mount Chaska. Mount Chaska actually has a full-time paid planner. We have a part-time planner. Mount Chaska has a full-time community enforcement officer. We don't, we don't have any. We don't even have a dog catcher now. It's a very serious issue. The fact that the city can't find either of those positions is what this conversation's about with you. Council, well, I'll just bring this up. Leslie, in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, brought up my fingerprints were all over the items on the agenda. And I'm gonna say that's somewhat true. It was a very much concern of mine. But you guys' bite marks are all over that. And that's because for four years, we started off with deficit budgets. This year, we got to a balanced budget. But we have spun out a lot of the reserve. And we really, at this time, can't afford to do some important things like have dog catchers, have full-time planning officials. The other contention about raising it to 10% would that it would be unfair against other cities. It's not. You cannot find cheaper buildings in the city than in the city of Dunsmere. You cannot find cheaper rents than in the city of Dunsmere. Those are the two major factors. Employment's a huge factor. You're not gonna find cheaper employment opportunities as an employer than you will find in the city of Dunsmere. We have nothing to fear as far as competition. We're in the market. We're even strong in the market. So that contention about that is totally wrong. The other thing is, is you gotta look to your citizens. We have a 10% tax on TOT. As you heard tonight, they even added another 2% on because they see the benefit of having that 2% above the 10%. 10 cents on every dollar that comes to the hotels is going into our treasury. That's one of many taxes. As you know, the TOT is critical in keeping our city alive right now. You know that it goes for some very important places. You guys have the power to tax. It is a good thing. We have a need. You guys often remind me that you were elected to make decisions for the people. And I'm gonna tell you, the people need the money. They need the services that it could provide. That being said, in my calculations, it's a small amount. It would probably help with funding both of those positions. It certainly won't fund the positions. That being said, the last element of it is, there's no reason not to make it 10%. And I hope that you guys should visit it and you consider the fact that we are taxing everyone else in the community. The biggest issue I have is we have a task force that hasn't completed. We're short on money to spend and a planning commissioner that works part-time to finish up the marijuana task force. And if anybody needs us to pass a 10% tax on retail sales, it's the marijuana people. They need to walk in, have a planner process that paper as fast as they can and not be delayed. They also need to know there's a code enforcement officer to make sure the elements necessary to have the marijuana in the city are gonna be done. So I want you to reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Close voting. Let's start off with, is it Sergeant yet, still deputy?
No, yet.
Deputy Westside, yeah. We'll start off with him, just so he has to go. There's only one person, so he wants to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna briefly report on the July stats from the sheriff's office. For the month of July, we had a total of 514 Dunsmere patrol hours. Total calls for service, including self-initiated, were 115. Total cases taken were 12. We had six traffic stops, eight citations, seven arrests, five of which were felonies and two of which were misdemeanors.
That's all I have for this one. Okay. Nothing else? Okay, Mr. Gray, it's your turn, please.
I'm just jotting down a few notes to respond to some of the public comments briefly. Well, actually, first, since we skipped over committee reports, nothing new to report on Mosprey other than the paperwork and... The paperwork that needed to be submitted to UP was submitted, but we haven't already backed it. We're essentially in the same spot. But we are waiting on UP and so they're waiting on us, us meeting that shows association about the city council.
Is it still a public vote?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Nothing's changed. Yeah, no less overall. The smoke and the fires and everything affects UP just like it affects everybody else. So to say they're putting out fires, PR fires all over the place, I'm sure they're struggling with that like the rest of us. So I think it's put a damper on a little bit of the progress. But essentially, the application packet and supporting documents are with UP Real Estate, so we should hear back soon. I just want to say I agree with Mr. Art that we should re, as he put it, re-engage with the visioning and planning process that we started, if in fact it was a process that we were supposed to continue. I mean, we had one planning session, maybe two, I can't remember now. And developed a vision statement, and all of that was good, and I thought it was well-attended and worked well. But we need to continue that and create, you know, the goals for the city council to be held accountable for the next year and five years and continue that process. So it's encouraging to see what Mount Chaska's doing, but we don't, we don't always have to compare ourselves to Mount Chaska. But we do, I think that we should continue that visioning process. The idea of the candidates for the election getting the agenda packet, that seems final, that's something you're already doing. That was the only thing I agree with Leslie on. This stuff seems insane to me. I'm sorry, that's too strong a word, but... Mark is a very ethical man, as is Blake. I thought those comments were completely out of line. You know, the main reason is whoever signs someone's candidate packet is exercising their right as a citizen to do that. I mean, they're not... Should they be not allowed to sign someone's packet? I don't, I don't know. Yeah, if you're a resident, you should, you have, I don't see the conflict exactly. Your signatures, it's not like Mahdi could have gotten someone else to sign it. It seems to me as if...
I thought it would be well. I'd get beyond that.
Well, it seems to me that...
Just like my trip home, I just ran into people, yes. Because I decided, I didn't realize that I was running my whole campaign out of City Hall.
Yeah.
Well, if there was an accusation that...
I didn't realize I even had a campaign.
Obviously, if there was an accusation or something that city funds were used on someone's private campaign or something like that, that would be out of line. But that's not what's going on. I think that's what's going on. So anyway, I just wanted to voice my support for the staff. They do a fantastic job. They're extremely ethical. That's why we hired Mark. One of the big reasons, I think, we hired Mark. But people can get frustrated with inaction or what they see as inaction, and I understand that. We all, we all can feel that at times. But I thought that was really out of line. Just to address Mario's comments on the tax, the reason we structured it, I believe, at Mr. Kinney's direction, to give it a range and have that flexibility, I don't think that piece of it you were taking any quibbles with or anything. The max, I believe, was set at 10%. And the initial was set at, I think, three and a half, or four, four percent. So you asked, you asked if there was a, well, you stated that there was no reason not to make it 10%. And just looking around at the other tax measures that are out there throughout the state, small cities, big cities, they're all over the map. Some are much lower, some are much higher. So it's an initial rate, and I would like to see the city revisit it, too, at the appropriate time when there's data. When we know how much it's collected, how much we think it could move up or down depending on the market. It's a brand-new industry to our town. Legal for the first time, industry. And so because of that newness, I think a conservative tax rate, conservative, cautious sense, is appropriate. I think I advocate for a lower tax rate as the initial, and we compromised. But I'm comfortable where it is. But I agree with Mario. It should be revisited at some point in the near future after we actually have data. So like in a year or so. That seems totally appropriate. But at that time, I would use some of those funds to hire a consultant to help do that because we don't have a planner. But a consultant could totally help us do that, but I think it'll be pretty cheap. I think that's all I have.
Josh?
Just wanna echo the sentiment from Mark Jayon, ethical. I completely disagree with that.
So don't echo the sentiment.
Let me ask, Mr. Spurlock, let me ask you this. Would you take a moment to tell us what you've been doing for the last few weeks?
I'll get that, get that, just, you know, but, yeah, no. Don't say it wrong, though. There's nothing produced from the city's resources to get out of the sun as president.
Excuse me, Josh, can you pull the mic?
Check one.
That's good.
Tasting.
That's good.
It works. Sorry about that. Yeah, no. Water under the bridge, you'd be asking. But yeah, just a little update about myself. I wasn't at the last meeting. I was working down on the car fire with the Castel Fire Protection District. But we ended up spending, I was down there for 20 days, but the rest of the department was there for 22 days. So that's where I was at there. Just an update about me. I did not get my paperwork in to refile to run for election again. And that was primarily just due to the fact that I was on that fire. But then I was also working to secure a job here in town, I should say, in the region, which I was able to get at the weed fire department, so that's... Right now, fire is a big thing in my life, I guess. Yeah, so that's just a little update about where I've been. I plan on staying here in Dunsmere. Love Dunsmere. I have a hard time even entertaining the idea of waiting in Dunsmere. I'll stay with the Dunsmere Fire Department, too, so you don't need to worry about that. But I'll just be paid to fight fire with a different department and keep an eye on things here in town as well. That's my update, and thank you everyone for the support, and look forward to finishing out my term. Full energy.
More pathways, you should continue with me.
Oh, absolutely. I am happy to say that because that's one thing that I feel very passionate about, is being involved with the community and volunteering. So if I'm not volunteering my time with the city council at the end of this election, then I will certainly find other ways to be involved and keep my energy here in Dunsmere. Don't worry, I'm gonna be alright.
Thanks. Dean?
First of all, for both you guys, it has been an honor to be in the ring with you, okay?
Like, I see, it's obvious, man.
So...
We'll be around.
You said fire's been a big part of your life, lady. Well, kind of fire's been a big part of all of our lives, lady. But on that note, I would like to extend a huge thank you to you and all the firefighters out there. Oh, my God. I was watching a thing this morning. They're coming over from Australia and New Zealand to fight fires here. They're helping us out. It's a training because nowhere in the world are fires as intense as they are here in California. And California was officially named Shaking Bay State the other day. I don't know if you guys know what a Shaking Bay is, but when a firefighter gets himself in trouble and he can't get out, there's nowhere to go. He's got a little pouch. He pulls it out, it's aluminum foil bag, and he lays on the ground. And he tucks himself in that, and the fire supposedly burns right over you, and you're okay. I've never tested one.
It is the ultimate last resort.
Best resource.
They call you a baked potato if you survive. Because that's exactly what happens.
Well, yeah, hopefully you're never made potato.
I have time.
I do have a, I would like to say that the smoke's been a big issue for a lot of people. Do everything you can to protect yourself. I've seen a video where a guy put an air filter on the back of a fan, and it actually worked. So there's little things that you can do to take steps. The masks, I think they're available at the hardware store.
They're also available at the medical clinic in town, so if you need to, you can go to the medical clinic and they can give it to you for free. We want to make sure everyone can breathe out there, so be aware of that.
And there was talk about a week ago, I'm not saying have a backpack and get ready to leave. I'm saying have a backpack if they tell you you gotta leave. There's, there's no problem with being prepared. And online, I believe it was Josh posted, a list of stuff, like your medicines, your life insurance papers, your car filing. Little things like that that, you know, you keep them in one spot if you gotta bounce, and you can take them with you. And the other thing is, the brew fest is at eight. And it's still scheduled. Hopefully, the smoke goes away. So that's probably that.
Josh?
Well, I don't know whether to be upset, honored, I mean, she likes to single as well, likes to single me out. I have no idea.
Mario?
I have no idea what I've done to, excuse my language, piss off Ms. Wilde this time. I would like to apologize for her insane, insane comment, thinking that we don't have an ethical staff. This has been the most transparent staff we have had for the history that I have seen for Dunsmere. I have read all the past minutes. Been here, you know, not on council. And one of the most ethical people that I know are Ms. Iskra and our city manager. And I just cannot believe the rant that she just did. Other than that, I'm still trying to... I don't, I really can't get beyond that.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to respond to Ms. Wilde's thing, too. There you go.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention about the vision statement. We did get the vision statement. It is in our budget document. And we do have goals that are in the budget document, but unfortunately, they're the old goals from before I started. The goals are important to me, just as it is important to the council here and to the community. I think it's, when you have a staff of 13 for the whole city and at City Hall administration, Julie and I, it's hard to stay focused because we get requests. Some requests, we have to stop everything we do to focus on those requests. And so our time is very limited. And having a goals that's established gives us, and you, the confidence to tell a lot of these things that come up, "Sorry, we're focusing on the top priorities." top priorities first. So thank you for bringing that up, Peter, and the council for putting importance on that. It's something I looked at, trying to find some time to do now that we have the election. I'm looking at sending something out to the council, just so they can understand kind of what's on the horizon. There's really a lot of things that have to get done in the next few, in this year, and then we have the new council coming on. So it may be appropriate to come back with the goal setting when we have the new council. But until then, I will send out a kind of a list of what I have that's top priorities going on right now. A lot of it is non-discretionary, there are things I have to do. So I, but I do want the council to know these things. It is important. I know it's important to the council, it's important to staff. So we'll definitely get back to that as soon as we can. And I just want to also say, the staff that this city has is amazing. They are truly ethical, and they put their heart and soul in, in the hours that they're here, and many of the hours that they're not supposed to be here, because they love this place. I hope, I believe everyone here knows that, but I want to echo, we are fortunate to have the staff we have, because we could not do what we're doing without the quality that we have.
So from my standpoint, I would like to echo that. I think that one of the things that Dunsmere has is a group of people that are working for us that care deeply about the city. It's not just a job to them, it's not just a chance to make some money and go home, they care deeply about it. And I think that I can share the general sense of when we had an evaluation of the city manager, and as far as we're concerned, there are all kinds of things and obstacles and challenges that are unusual to this particular city, but we couldn't be happier and trust any further, both the, well, the staff, without a doubt. I want to say that clearly. And so it really kind of amazes me when people that don't understand the challenges, and the challenges are this, you take a city like Mount Chastain. Basically, a city like this has to do everything that the city of Mount Chastain has to do, except they have to do it with half the staff. And it's because we can't afford to go off and hire other staff. I looked at the different things that were on the plate of the city manager, and he gave us an email recently on the updates and things, and it's staggering to realize how much work had to go into each of those different crises that came up, including the one we'll be dealing with today, that finally was solved after a couple of months of extreme effort on the part of our city attorney, our city finance director, our city manager, and our admin assistant. I watched them, I knew all the conflicts that were involved, and steadily, point by point, with a steady compass towards the future and coming up to a good solution, they moved in that direction. So I just want to be clear, and I think I'm speaking for the council on that, that we have the trust, and we feel like we're very fortunate to have the team working for us. Now with that in mind, we just went through a financial crisis, and we went through a financial crisis where the city was hit with about $100,000 shortfall in our budget. $100,000 that we didn't have to spend on what we had to spend on. Because of the way we worked this through, we're gonna end up feeling pretty good out of the whole situation. And we'll talk more about that later, but I just want everyone to realize that the people that are working in there are working their hearts out. They love this place, and that's all I'm gonna say on that. I do want to point out that as far as the effort going on with regards to keeping us safe in an evacuation, I did call a meeting of the city manager, the fire department, and the police, Deputy Wettein there with us, and also Sergeant Marrow to go over what would happen in the case of an evacuation. And I feel confident that they understand what the challenges are. When it finally comes down to an actual evacuation, it'll very much depend on the situation, where the winds are coming from, where the fire is, all those kind of things. But I do believe that the fire department understands what their role is, and I do believe that the city manager understands his role in it, and I believe that the sheriff's department understands their role. So if something does come down the line and we do have to evacuate, we're gonna be relying on them, and I feel like we're in pretty good hands right now. And I'm looking forward to the election coming up. We have four candidates. If you haven't heard the four candidates, Vishanta is running again. Unfortunately, we lost Josh in a situation there. Mr. Craig has served four years, he's done it very well. He's moving on to family and music and business. And then we have Peter Arth is running, and we have Matthew Bryan is running, and we have Giuliana Lucchese. So those are the four people who we are running, and I'm believing that the chamber and Rotary are both working on coming up with events to let people get to know the candidates, and we'll be putting that information out in the future. With that in mind, let's move on. We have the consent agenda.
Yep. I made a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
A second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the no public hearing, no old business, we have the water bottling facility lease. Mr. City Manager, take us through this exciting moment in time in history.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
We have some, but, so we just went through all of the consent agenda, you can see.
Yeah. Yeah.
Congratulations.
So we, we have, in the audience, David and Kit Marshall.
Want to stand up so people can meet you?
Hello.
Richard, could you swing just a second, just to grab them?
Ladies and gentlemen, Ed and Hoor.
So would you explain why they're clapping and happy and smiling?
Yes, so this has been a long, ongoing process, and the mayor alluded to some shortfalls that we had in our budget last fiscal year, primarily due to the loss of revenue for the lease of our water bottling facility. At the end of that, the city did issue a notice to pay or we're going to look to solicit other tenants, and we didn't receive the money, so we ended up going out, and which was kind of neat that we had Cisco Economic Development. Oh, Isha, because that was one of the resources that I went to to help out with the recruitment of getting qualified candidates to apply to be the new tenants. And we received three proposals. The finance committee was also the ad hoc committee to evaluate the proposals that we evaluated based on what we were asking them to submit for, and the top proposal was David and Kit's proposal. The city council authorized myself as a city manager to begin negotiations with the top candidate, and those negotiations were ongoing, but the difficulty was to try to work with the, there was a third party here, and that was the prior tenant, and what to do with all the equipment and stuff like that. So it was a complicated negotiations because of the dynamics, but everyone persevered. There's times where we were all getting frustrated, but that's common in negotiations, when you get close to the finish line, nerves get jittery. But we stuck with it, and I think everybody came out as best as we could. Nobody got everything they wanted, but I think what we got is what's fair. So we had the, we brought the draft lease to the city council in closed session. We talked a little more details about what was in that draft lease, and today, we brought, we're bringing forward that draft lease with just minor changes, nothing substantial, that were agreed upon by our city attorney. And again, I brought this up before, but John did an amazing job. When we were in the negotiations at the table, John was able to really cut through a lot of stuff and really boil things down to what was important and really what everyone was looking for. So hats off to John as well. And so what we have here.
Before you get into that.
Sure.
I would like to point out one thing that's really important here, and that was that because of the stamp that David and Kit did, they were able to make sure that nothing would go into place unless the city, first of all, received everything that was due to them. If they had just operated on their own, we would be in litigation for god knows how long. Thanks to them, we got the money that we were all grateful for.
Yay!
I think we all have Dunsmere's back. With that in mind, before we get out into details, I'd like the two of you, if you would, to come up and introduce yourself to the public and let us know what your vision is, and then we can talk about the details, okay? And Richard?
Wow, it's vision. Yeah. It's got to be quite as long as everyone does know, you know? It started out, I think it might have been like, hey, Mark, somewhere in there, it's just, it seems like, you know, where did the time go? But it sort of had, as Mark said, ups and downs and everything. As people were talking tonight, I was just thinking, you know, I almost want to jump up and say, you know, hey, I agree completely with the excellence of everybody that has worked with us, the positive reception, it's just, I think it's made us both more and more excited about being a part of this community and really doing some good things here. And so we're tremendously excited about it, and we thank you all so much. Mark, what can I say? You are amazing. Steady, stable, got it together, I mean, what a guy, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And each one of you, again, has been so positive, so helpful, you do so helpful.
What is your business that you have right now, and what do you plan with this? That's what I think.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Sorry, you're trying to get me to get the point, okay? I hear that, yes. Yeah, I own, I'm the owner operator of Ed and Brewing Company, and we have been expanding. We just put down payment today on a new bottler. We're gonna go to 12 ounce sixes and some other fun things with some good art on it, and start really expanding the brewing. Our hope is to find something in the area somewhere to expand that brewing, and we want to do it here, if we can possibly figure that out, how to make that happen. As for the vision of the water plant, one of the nice things about the work that David has done now for years is that he really understands plants and lines, you know, and all the things that go with distribution and management, quality controls, all those kinds of things. So I'm already learning a lot from him just as we're doing this. So our hope is that what we're going to be doing is bottling a lot of water. We took, we bought the brand as well, so that we own, it's still gonna be Castle Rock Water, and we're talking more about Castle Rock Glacial Spring Water, kind of pulling it off that way. We don't have plans to introduce a lot of flavored kinds of beverages, but we've really been following the research on what's going on. And as far as where we're going, we're gonna be bottling, we're gonna be bottling water. What else am I gonna say? One of the fun things is that water is sort of one ingredient, but this truly is the best water on earth. I don't think there's any, people say that, they say it all over the place. You know, a woman contacted you, right, and said that her mother has cancer, and that the only thing that she can really ingest and keep there is the water from Castle Rock. So we are sending, we have already connected and are sending her some free water, some bottles that we, you know, some cases of water and so on. It was fun to be able to go down to the mock, to go down to the car fire site, or not the site itself, but to go down there and take some pallets of water that was inventory that was there and all good to go, and so we took that down and got it into Dunsmere's name as well, you know, so that was kind of a holding hands project that was nice. They very much appreciated that. I think as far as vision goes, we want to think about the kind of marketing we want to do is around lifestyle marketing, intergenerational for this water, and a lot around disruption, if you will, sort of disrupting the thought about what people drink, why people drink water, and why it's really important to have the best water on earth. So we're kind of, that's about as close I can get to a solid vision, but I'll turn it over to David.
You can tell David Marshall.
Man, he works.
Yeah, I'll be a little sort of, anyway, Kit, you can tell us the marketing person, and I'm more the plant person. An hour, an hour ago, I was in a sweaty t-shirt down on the floor at the bottling plant, and, you know, kind of going through all the operations there and looking at things and making sure that they operate. It's gonna be a tremendous job and a lot of work, but, you know, it's good work and honorable work. And, you know, we're proud to represent Dunsmere and carry that name out. We'll put a nice signed Castle Rock on, so people can see it from the freeway, and hopefully someday we'll have a sign around that's home of Dunsmere, home of Castle Rock Water, and add maybe contribute a little bit more to the community here, so that's it.
So do you think David came back from Spain here on this, so?
Yeah, I've been running almond plant in Spain for the last five years, and it was time to come home. I started, I was gonna be there for about 18 months and get it going, and, you know, then suddenly the business grew to, you know, four or five times bigger than we thought, so I had to stay because of the soot air. But now, you know, all management's there, so I'm coming back to California. I have an almond farm down in Gilroy County, so I also do almond farms.
There's one word that I did not hear, and it's probably one of the most magical words of all of us sitting up here, and that's the J word.
Job.
Jobs?
Oh, jobs. Well, that's an interesting story, because today, as a matter of fact, I was kind of reflecting on that moment when you start a business or you do something like this. I have a checkbook on the hood of my pickup truck paying the people that are out there helping us get this bottling plant relaunched, so. Coming out right now, sort of coming out of our personal checkbook, but we'll get it done, and I thought, well, this is a great moment to savor, you know, hopefully.
We want to get it anyway, go faster. Any council members want to ask any questions while we have this opportunity? Do you wish?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, without a doubt.
I have just one more thing to say, that I think is important, and this was David's idea, it's great, but you know, the Cisco, the Cisco Economic Development Group, that we've all been working really hard to kind of do the concept of how do you keep, how do you keep people here, instead of, you know, instead of coming back, what about never leaving? And so what if we were to really build with the College of Cisco, some really good hands-on, experiential, vocational kinds of technical aspects and so on, and really started building that concept and did it in a way that really did join hands with the community, and all communities in Cisco County, but also with the College of Cisco. So one of the things that we were talking about, David came up with this idea, was to connect with College of Cisco and get ahold of a biology student or polyology students because of the lab and all the testing, they have to do the water, it's constant, it's constant, constant, and we're just thinking, boy, what a great place for kids, young, you know, adults to learn if they're taking classes in biology, really see what hands-on sort of life work looks like. And we want to explore that a little further, so David is contacting the College of Cisco.
And for the public that may not know, one of the reasons we are so excited about this is also because Kit has been known for reaching out and supporting the community. She doesn't just hunker down, she reaches out, and so you can see that right away. So any questions or any comments from the council about Buma?
Buma?
Buma? Okay, Mr. Brennan, thank you.
Yay!
So walk us through it, Mr. Brennan.
Well, I already kind of walked through the process, so the lease that we have before you today for consideration, there's five things that I put in the staff report to highlight, I'll just read what those are. Number one, this is a five-year lease with five five-year options, so it's a long-term commitment that we're proposing here. Number two, the water rate structure for the bottling line is currently 381% higher than Dunsmere's rate payers are paying.
Would you explain that to people to understand that they might be thinking that they're taking water out at the same rate or whatever? Would you explain how this works with the water?
Well, there's two meters there, so they have a domestic meter that runs the bathrooms and they're like domestic type of stuff, that's just like everybody else's meter and bill that they have, sewer and everything else. But the water bottling line is a commercial, it's a contracted service, and in that, they are being charged a separate rate than what the average customer is. And what we've agreed to at this point, what's in the lease, is a rate that is substantially higher than the average person.
And they, and we give no rights away also, is that correct?
No, that's, yeah, so number, number three is, at the signing of the lease, the city will receive $28,952 if approved. For years two and three, the rent will be $4,827 per month. Years four and five, the rent will be $8,050 per month, and extensions slash options will increase the rent by the consumer price index for all US cities average for the month of April. And number five, the lease does not create any water rights or any rights to the water. So they will get water that's available, just, no, there's no rights to the water. And there are two options that are being, that I'm proposing to the city council today. Option one is authorize the city manager to enter into the lease agreement with AVEA beverages as presented, and option two is really if there's any changes that the council would like to see made, if so, those changes would have to go back for negotiations and then brought back. then brought back later.
Okay, before we get to comments, any questions from the council members? Bryce?
Um, is there, so, it's a five-year term, and then the extension on top of that, what are the terms around terminating the lease? Is it? Not that I want terminated lease.
It could be terminated, of course, by any of either party, and if we can't supply the water, they have a right to terminate.
Okay. That's all I need to.
Josh?
All right. No questions on comments?
We haven't, Kip. There's nothing?
This has been a long time coming, and I can't believe we're to, to overcome all the hurdles.
Mr. Mayor?
Just one other thing. I know some people are interested, you alluded to it earlier, I believe, about the city's water right at the spring, maybe Mr. Kenny can talk about that as well? I just want to make sure it's clear to the public that the, the, the plant cannot, you know, exceed what the city's water right is anyway.
The, the lease, by the way, there's two sources of revenue with this lease, one's the water, and the other's the rent. So, the lease does not guarantee any quantity of water or any quality of water, and it does not contract away the city's water rates. So, this is all excess water to the city. And with respect to the rates, you understand, as Mark said, the rate they're paying for water is a negotiated rate, that the customer, this totally does not affect the customers' rates, because the customers' rates are all set by Prop. 218, and you can't charge anybody for anything that they don't get, but this is a negotiated rate, different.
Okay, I'm going to open the podium for public comments.
Oh. I should have closed it. I know, you missed it. I was trying to get you, you were going so fast, I was trying to get you to restate your comment of support for the staff and city, so that we could all clap. But you were going fast, and I understand, I'm a talk. When this all started being processed, I knew this was going to be an incredibly, incredibly difficult deal to finalize, and I am just so proud of you guys hiring and you guys letting the man do the work that he had to do. I read the lease, I could have actually answered Mr. Bryce Craig's questions from the lease, that's probably one of the better leases we've had, and so, I thank you, Mr. Kenny, and staff. But, really, I mean, I think this city's turned a corner, and we're doing things very professionally, and I thank you very much that this went through, and that you guys followed it through just appropriately, so thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Any other public comments? Close podiums and public comments, any discussion beyond a motion?
Yes, I think, I mean, let me just, a couple of comments. First of all, you know, Mario said it's a good lease, I'll tell you, no lease is perfect, except the lease that never gets executed. So, this is, this is an agreement between two willing parties, and I think it's good for both sides. If the negotiation was complicated, it was never contentious. The city is very fortunate to have had these particular people available and interested. So, I think the lease hopefully benefits both sides and continues to benefit both sides, because it only works when it works for both sides.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager's interventional lease agreement with Abiva, Abiva Beverage LLC as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shantel? Yes. Councilmember Grayson?
Absolutely, yes.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Gray.
Aye.
And Mayor Rich.
Aye, good stuff.
Yeah.
You know, that, that problem goes out to everybody involved, everybody involved, we got to see it around here, no woman can give a.
But I think it's awesome, I just need to camera.
Okay.
We hope you sell a lot of water, make a fortune.
Godspeed with your business. Okay, on to the next item, last item for today. We have the renewal of the contract with Clemmons.
It's not a renewal, Mr. Mayor, it's an extension.
Extension, okay, actually, it's a very key word. Uh, Mr. Brennan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We were revisiting something that we did last year, actually, it's a bit later than what we did last year. Last year, I asked the city council to provide an extension of the lease or the contract so that it'd give us time to develop a contract, a new, more comprehensive contract. Unfortunately, haven't even really started putting the pen to paper, collected, I have samples, but because of the workload, that hasn't, hasn't happened yet. So, as such, the, last year, we were fortunate enough to not have a cost of living increase, which has been historically in the, the contract as, for December, and they waived that increase, but this year, they, they are requesting to have that CPI index, it's a CPI index from Bureau of Labor Statistics for December 31st, 2017, which is included in the packet, and it was published at 2.1%. There is, that is, with this contract, is a budget amendment request that I'm also asking to have signed, to increase the appropriations to the final of $3,150 from the reserve. And hopefully, we'll be able to get a contract written in this next fiscal year.
Okay, any questions?
This is, uh, thank you. Just one, if, so we're going to extend for one year, if you can agree upon a new contract, would that, would the goal be to, to that contract to take the place of this one during the course of next year, or just wait until this year's expired and start a new contract?
It's unlikely, gentlemen, going to have a contract by the end of this fiscal year with what is going, with all the stuff that's happening right now. It goes back to setting goals, there's a lot that's happening right now. Unless this gets to be put front and center, and that's something I, like I said, we're going to be saying out on email, saying, you know, these are the things I have to do, there's very little time left, is this going to be one of those things we're spending time on, is to develop this contract? So, unless we, we hire somebody to write this contract, and that's just going to, that's probably going to be a hundred thousand dollars that we don't have, so. If, if we, if I can get the time to work on this, this contract and bring it to the city council before the end of the fiscal year, then that would be great.
I mean, I certainly take your word that it's a very complicated contract, or at least it should be, more complicated than is now, which, I've heard in the past that it's only a few pages, it's long, half, it's, it's a two page, so, I understand that in the future, a more comprehensive contract is necessary, and given state regulations, I believe, is the reason why, an appropriate, a more appropriate contract is needed. A hundred thousand dollars to develop, that seems extremely steep, but is, is that the opinion of our attorney as well, that something like that would be necessary?
Mark and I haven't discussed this, and I guess I don't want to publicly discuss with Mark, but I, I don't think that would be that much. And actually, the issue is probably not so much the language of the contract, but the contracts, we, we have to have rates, and, you know, we're having a rate study done, and that's, you know, the process of that, so, it's a 218 issue.
Right, I understand that, but, I guess there's, I guess there's some confusion in my mind, chicken and egg there, where, like, to determine the rates, don't we need to have a price for the contract hauler?
Yeah, the hauler has to know what we're going to ask the hauler to do.
Okay.
And that's, you know, we need to decide that, but people have a lot of dreams about, you know, we'll have green waste, and we'll have recycling, all good things, but recycling is a money loser, green waste is a money loser, so, you know, in and of itself, and I'm sure the contractor, we'll talk to the contractor, but, which of these, these are things, all they, all, these are things they could do, the question is, what do we, how much do we want to ask the customers to pay to get that done, and you obviously will play a role in that.
Would it be appropriate to spend money from the solid waste surplus?
That's, that's happening right now.
But would it be appropriate to spend some monies from that on development of the contract?
Let me talk to Mark about it, because I have some sample contracts at my.
Okay, thank you.
Either way, for right now, I assume we're recommending that, just, basically, we could get it done in the time that we need to get it done, is that right?
Uh, yeah, the extension is the only option at this point, and just let me quantify the hundred thousand dollar, I've done contracting for 218 types of contracts, water studies, rate, sewer studies, and I've paid over a hundred thousand dollars for some of those, and I think the cheapest one I've contracted out was eighty-five thousand dollars. The, the, I personally was involved with development of a solid waste contract with other attorney firms, and I would say that the cost that we paid the attorney firms are, was probably close to a hundred thousand dollars, and that was with a bunch of staff, so we're very fortunate to have John Kenny and his group, because we are getting a really good deal there. So, that is maybe something I can work with John Kenny, if, if we can get the appropriation to do that, absolutely, so, we'll, I'll talk with John Kenny about that, that may be the appropriate way to go.
Thank you.
Josh?
I've got just one question, one second.
Okay, open to the public.
Podium's open to the public for comment on the extension for funds.
Well, Esther, Regina, and I both serve on the same city committee with Big Dave and Mayor, looking at both proposals for pace engineering to raise the funds for rep collection for Clemmons, and at the same time, having an honest discussion in our committee, exactly the point that John Kenny raises. There is, the pickups that Clemmons does, under contract, their equipment, their labor, and the city apparently marks it up with an administrative fee, and that's, that part of the enchilada, whether it's cost effective or not, we really don't have studies and information from Clemmons to know that. But more to the point, what are the citizen and business expectations around tree trimming? What are the expectations around street sweeping? What are the expectations around snow removal? And to the extent that involves city equipment and city staff and city administration, who's going to pay for those aspects, assuming the city wants to offer those services between residential and commercial? So, pace engineering is soon, I think, next month to make a presentation to the council and the public. I support going one year, because I don't think the city is able to cost justify whatever increases Clemmons is asking for, and the city's only starting to deal with the worn-out truck that provides a lot of these services, the city employees use, the number of hours the city employees use. I, I disagree a little bit with John about green waste and recycling being a dream, it's just like energy, I mean, coal used to be cheap, but now solar and wind are cheaper than coal. Recycling and green waste disposal, it used to be a dream for the environmentalists, but the more the city says, okay, Clemmons and city staff, pick it all up, put it in the bins at 600 a bin, and truck it off somewhere, that starts to get less cost effective. There may be other things that will benefit the community and the rate payers, so, at the end of the day, I think one year is plenty, and whether it costs a hundred thousand or fifty thousand, we're all aware that the community in Mount Shasta said no to Clemmons. They said, we're going to get our own trucks, we're going to create our own jobs.
McLeod.
What did I say?
You said Mount Shasta.
McLeod, but McLeod.
Yeah, me too.
So, uh, the opinion is, maybe they were dumb to do that, even though their general manager recommended it, and their board of directors said yes, but I think the city ought to at least look at the economics behind the options available to us as our community returns to economic viability. Thank you.
I'm hoping to say, dear, what Peter said, if, in short, what he means is, we got a lot of stuff to consider, and we need to consider it, and we need to make sure the citizens know what, and express what they want, what they're not going to want to pay for. So, if that's kind of what you were saying, that's as long as short of it. Also, the lease, these two pages, you'll see the back page is signatures, so, my question to Mr. Kenny is, as long as we're not going to be, and of course, his point is, really stated earlier about the bottle plant, it's all about, we trust Clemmons, and it's been a great relationship, but as long as the lease is not going to be of any concern being what it is, as brief as it is, you know, I would agree with the council's decision.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan, would you like to say hello?
We're seeing you in eight, nine, or ten. Diana Duran, 450, stop second, speaking of Dunsmere. I agree that it's the lease that has, we've been working off of now, I think it's basically been one that my dad started in 1973, so I understand the need to update it, and, and I have learned a lot, having to do some research on numbers that I never had to do before, so, and it's been a learning experience, but I agree that, I agree with the rate study, that we should all be on the same page, and we want what's best for Dunsmere, we've been serving them for 45 years, and we'd like to keep doing that.
Chris? Thank you. Any questions? Anybody?
Yeah, that's where it gets good. Who are you fucking here?
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor? Yes? Are you ready for a motion, everybody? Any discussion?
I just have one comment, which was that I, I'm, I'm actually happy that we have the CPI increase in, even just in this extension, because at least it represents not just a perpetuation of what we think the cost should be over and over, there is, there are always increases in cost, even if you just look at CPI, for contracts like this, so I'm, I'm actually glad to see that it was included, even though it costs us more money, and that we're taking the appropriate ways to incorporate it into our budget, that's all.
All right.
There's a.
Peter Arth made a comment about, um, the dumpsters being $600, and so, Mark and I have been trying to work out also a bill from the Public Works Department, a way to maybe put two yard bins down there and work something out with the city, so that cost is not as high as it is right now for getting rid of some of that.
It sounds encouraging that you're talking as much as you are with city management.
True.
I move to approve a one-year contract extension for Clemmons Waste Renewal, beginning on July 1st, 2018, and expired on June 30th, 2019, and authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 2018 dash, what are the numbers?
Seven.
Eleven, and budget amendment.
I would second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shantel? Yes, Councilwoman Grayson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray Gray?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, would you expect the budget amendment to come before us?
We'll work on that, we'll, we'll have it ready for the mayor to sign tomorrow.
Okay, sorry, I thought, I understood, I thought the, I thought that had to come back before us, I understand, thank you.
Are there any things before the adjournment here?
I wouldn't like to sit, reiterating the fact that I'm looking forward to seeing I wouldn't like to reiterate the fact that I'm looking forward to seeing one of these things, right? I'm really looking forward to hopefully one day see one of these with our trail to Montberry Falls.
Yeah. What did trout ever do to you?
Anything else? No objection to adjourn, meeting adjourned.